All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If we could be seated, please. And if everybody would take your cellphone out and make sure that it is on vibrate or silent, so that we don't have them going off during the council meeting, that would be wonderful. Welcome to the city council meeting of Tuesday, January 18th, 2011, of the city of Waukegan. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Figueroa. Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman Needham.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
I said, "Present."
You met Larson, I think.
I'm Larson.
Well, we have a quorum. Could we please rise for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated, please.
Motion to seat Alderman Cunningham.
Motion by Alderman Conkin, seconded by Alderman Tempest, to seat Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right. All right. First up would be the mayor's comments. Let me dig through my little bit of a pile here to get to them. Well, the first thing I'd like to speak to, the city of Waukegan lost a good friend and somebody who was a community servant for many years, going back to my dad's days as mayor. I want to send my condolences to the family of Noah Murphy. Noah served in the city of Waukegan as an alderman, as an employee, he was the building commissioner, and I think he had some other positions for many, many years, going back, I believe, if I remember correctly, to the late '50s or early '60s. And he was a guy that I knew very well. He was a close friend with my father. He was a good guy. He was a lot of fun. And our best go out to his family and friends. I'm sure that he will be sorely missed by all. Second, I attended the grand opening of Zip Fitness last Friday and came away extremely impressed by the facilities and the group that selected Waukegan as ground zero for what could be a highly successful chain of exercise facilities in the Midwest. They're a great fit on the northwest corner of Grand and Green Bay roads, and I believe that their presence there will help further stimulate more economic development on that corner. They have very affordable rates, around $12.50 per month for individuals. I believe it's $25 for an individual and a daily guest. And they have an impressive array of equipment, so if anyone's looking for a place to make good on their New Year's resolution to get fit, Zip might be a good place for you to take a look at. The state has finally made a move on the income tax situation, and as we all know, our personal and corporate rates will be moving up. A lot has been said about this increase, driving business and people from our state to our competitive states, Wisconsin, Indiana, and Iowa, and Missouri. An independent group has analyzed Illinois' taxes relative to our neighbors, and I would like to read to you what this group has come up with. I think once you hear these stats, although none of us like to pay higher taxes, I think you'll view this a little bit differently. This is a little bit complicated because most of Illinois' neighbors have what are known as progressive taxes, like the federal income tax. They use brackets to tax the wealthy at higher rates than the poor. Illinois' flat 5 percent tax will apply to all earners. So this group decided to take a look at the median family income in each state and see how much the average family will be paying in taxes, and here's how it breaks down. In Iowa, a median family income is $61,156. Their tax rate for the median family is 7.92 percent. Wisconsin, median family income is $62,638. Their tax rate is 6.5 percent. Missouri, the median income is $56,318. Their tax rate is 6 percent. Kentucky, $49,801 for median income. Their tax rate is 5.8 percent. Illinois, $66,806 is a median income. Our tax rate is 5 percent. In Indiana, $56,432 for the median family income. Their tax rate is 3.4 percent. But don't let that fool you. Every county in Indiana, save for two, if I remember correctly, has their own personal income tax. So that rate is not folded in to this number here. As I said, the average county rate is about 1.43 percent, raising the state's total to 4.83 percent on average, just slightly lower than Illinois'. And one thing about Wisconsin is that they tax pensions. Illinois does not. So that's something to keep in mind for retirees. If you're thinking about fleeing across the border to escape this increase, you won't. The corporate income tax picture is a bit more complicated still because Illinois employs a 2.5 percent personal property replacement tax, while states like Wisconsin apply state property taxes to businesses. Still, the 9.5 percent corporate rate that Illinois will end up with will be within a point or two of Indiana and Wisconsin, and significantly less than Iowa's top rate of 12 percent. Meanwhile, and this is, I'm going to read this again from the article and the statement. "Illinois Governor Pat Quinn made the point that the income tax isn't the only thing a business will look at when choosing where to locate. It's important," quote, "it's important for the state government not to be a fiscal basket case," Quinn said, "and indeed, the state's tax height might well restore business confidence in Illinois' finances as it moves to close a yawning $15 billion budget deficit. But as long as Scott Walker in Wisconsin, who is their new governor, wants to play the blame game, he might consider the Tax Foundation's assessment of his state." Now, this is a quote. "For the past three decades, Wisconsin's state and local tax burden has consistently ranked among the nation's highest." And again, this comes from the Tax Foundation. And one more frank assessment came from the Illinois Manufacturers Association President Greg Basie. He told the Sun-Times, "Wisconsin is not the Mecca where everybody is going to be running off to. The last time I looked, their business climate was a lot bleefer than ours." So there's been a lot of doom and gloom put forth about this tax increase, that it's going to drive the people from the state, it's going to crush any recovery that we have, but I think the numbers really do give a better picture as to what our position is relative to personal income tax and corporate tax. I think we're still going to remain competitive. Our big problem in the state of Illinois is, now I'm trying to think of what the right word is for it, workers' comp. The state of Illinois, when you compare us to every state around us, takes a major beating when it comes to workers' comp. And it's something that this state is going to have to address. I spoke with a representative from the governor's office this afternoon, and they did tell me that is on the governor's agenda to begin to take a look at. It probably won't happen overnight. It's a big union matter. They will fight to have any changes in workman's comp in Illinois, but if we are going to be competitive with Wisconsin, Indiana, Iowa, and others, we are going to have to address that. So I think we have to remain hopeful. I don't think we're ecstatic, but I think we have to remain hopeful for the state of Illinois' economic development picture and keep boosting the state and keep looking for development opportunities for us as we continue to compete with our closest enemy, which is Pleasant Prairie. So now, leading into item number four, and I think it's, makes sense to go to this, is the issue of the levy. As you know, several weeks ago, the city council adopted a zero-growth levy. And by doing that, we are going to be left, if nothing else is done, with approximately a $10 million deficit. What that all means in regards to the city's future will be hashed out over the next few weeks. What the impact's going to be on our various departments, we can't say yet, but it doesn't mean, it doesn't point to anything good. There's no doubt that we will be looking at layoffs and rollbacks of services and other things as a result of that. Now, I'm hoping that we can offset some of that levy by adopting a number of fee increases. And we're going to be taking to the aldermen over the next few weeks a number of these suggested fee increases to try to plug that budget hole. I can't say whether they're going to adopt them or not. I can't force anybody to adopt anything. They are, in the end, have control over the purse strings. But we will be going to them with these requests, and we will be, we've already met with some aldermen, we'll be meeting with the remainder of them over the next couple of weeks, and hoping that everybody gets up to speed on what the amounts of money that will be coming in and what the impact on the budget will be. And hopefully, within a month or so, they'll be prepared to vote on whether or not to adopt these fee increases. We cannot wait until our budget process, our budget is adopted, May 1st, because we have to start planning, in fact, we're doing it already. What is the impact going to be on city services? How is it going to impact our ability to plow your streets? How is it going to impact our ability to provide you with sufficient code enforcement, sufficient fire protection, sufficient police protection? All of these will be impacted by that vote. So there'll be more to come, and I will keep you posted as this goes along, but I am hoping that not the next city council meeting maybe, but the one following, we will be prepared to put these on the agenda as new business and have them voted on and acted upon by our city council.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to seat Alderman Moiseo.
Oh, yes, we have a motion. I'm sorry, Greg, I didn't see you come in. We have a motion by Alderman Newsom, who was the second? Seconded by Alderman Cunningham to seat Alderman Moiseo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You got it, Greg. You can stay in your chair. Thank you. The other one I wanted to mention is something that is a lot of fun, and the Waukegan High School Junior ROTC is having their spaghetti dinner on the 22nd of this month. It is being held at the Brookside Campus, goes from 11:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. For an individual spaghetti dinner, it's $7. For a family of four, it's $24. So they give you a little bit of a break. It's a lot of fun. It's definitely a very worthwhile group to support. They're good kids. Our ROTC program in the city of Waukegan has been strong for as long as I can remember, and believe it or not, I actually was in ROTC myself my freshman year and went to Camp McCoy for the basic training, and I learned a lot. I learned, the number one thing was, I was never going to be a person cut out for the military. So, you know, that helped me out as far as my career path in life. But the kids are good kids. I've had a chance to meet with them and talk to them. I've provided them with some financial support here and there, and they're always very grateful for it. So those of you here tonight, and those of you who might be seeing this meeting on television, I believe, let's see, the 22nd would, now unfortunately, the meeting's broadcast on Sunday.
Or you can see it online.
Or you can see it online, and we'll put it up on our website, too, to make sure that people get a chance to look at it, but go, it's worth it. Spaghetti's good. It may not be Louis' spaghetti, but it's good, and it's a lot of fun to go and just kind of hang out and meet the kids, and they're always very nice, so I would ask everybody that gets a chance to please go.
When is that again?
That is on the 22nd, over at West Campus, at Brookside Campus, starts at 11:00 a.m. and goes till 5:00 p.m. And even if you don't go to the event, they're always open to accepting donations from anybody in the community, so if you had an extra $20 or something that you could donate to them, I'm sure they would be very appreciative of it. It helps pay for their equipment, it helps pay for some of their travel. We have a very, very good rifle team, by the way, that comes out of the ROTC program that has actually won the state championship a few times. So anything you can do to help the kids out would be great. Okay. Now we go to audience time. I do want to also announce that we will have an executive session, which will come following the aldermen's comments, and we will not be coming out of executive session with anything to act on, so when we do go and exec, for all intents and purposes, that will conclude the public portion of the meeting. Correct? All right. We have motion to accept our minutes of January 3rd, 2011, the regular meeting and executive session.
And Mayor, there is a-
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped. Let's do this.
But there is an amendment to that. There was a correction made. Alderman Moiseo was the mayor, Chairman Pro Tem, and I had Figueroa. I did change it, and I did give copies to each alderman, and the one I gave you is a corrected copy, so.
Do we need a motion? No. Okay. We'll accept as delivered then. Okay. No, I take, let's go to audience time first. I'm sorry. I need to get my bifocals. I'm just, even with my extra-large print here, I miss stuff. First off, we have Mr. Perry Foster, 2026 Kingston Road.
First of all, I'd like to say thanks, and my concern is, is that, you know, I did talk with the mayor, and the challenges that we all got coming up in the future with you guys, with your budgets and your going over, I'd really like to challenge all the aldermen, the mayor, the unions, to sit down, put away their differences, and try to work out an agreement where we don't have to lay off people. I don't like to see, however, this man with the police department, the fire department, he letting the city work through stuff. So I really would hope and pray that you guys will put away all differences and try to work together as a team and make, so we don't have to lose. And I don't think the city looks good when we keep in the paper every time, I'm laying off people, or we're shorting this, we're shorting that. It doesn't make us look good. We're looking at options. I hope you guys will get all options. You look at around, you see a lot of take-home vehicles in the city of Waukegan. Let's do away with take-home vehicles. Why do people need take-home vehicles? Everybody else drives to work. Have everybody drive to work. Second, I'd like to see an ordinance that if you're receiving a paycheck in the city of Waukegan, live in Waukegan. Why should you reap the benefits of Waukegan but not live in Waukegan? To me, that's wrong. If you get a paycheck from the city of Waukegan, live in Waukegan. Then I think your heart can be more into the Waukegan than if you not. So all I'm asking is, please, as these budgets are coming up, put away the differences, try to work together, and let's try to keep from laying these people off. Everybody needs jobs, so please look at that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Mr. Chris Blanks, 409 Oak Street in Waukegan.
Brother Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan. Hopefully, everybody had a nice King Day, Dr. King Day celebration. Also, I wanted to make mention here that, well, you all know that we have our new place that we opened up, but before I do that, I remember one time the mayor said, you know, that they was going to be pretty stiff on people walking in the middle of the street, but I hope, I'm hoping everybody can, you know, just kind of keep in mind our law enforcement, you know, with the snow being on the sidewalks, that they be conscious of that when they seeing people walking in the middle of the street, and don't be too hard on them, because I know they said it was going to stiffen the laws on that. Okay? Also, with us opening our new facility over on the first ward, I did tell you that I will come and make you aware of some of the community initiatives that we have and programs, and I want to say that, you know, for the listening audience that have youth and that want to have them involved. What we have, they're in the community at Black Abolition Movement for the Mind, which is at 801 McAllister Avenue. We have poetry writing and reading workshops, Literacy Through Poetry. We also have our poetry and discipline. We have tutoring of math and English workshops. We also have our, well, we're working with the youth of the parents, children of incarcerated parents workshops. So let's see, what else we have here? We have a number of different workshops, math, English, financial workshops, working with the youth, helping them with some financial discipline as well. And in saying that, this is just a list of a few of the things, so if anybody's interested, they can definitely get in touch with me, or they can stop by 801 McAllister Avenue. And as I said before, you know, we do believe in giving credit and appreciation where it's due, just like we extended our appreciation to the Corporate Counselor Newton Finn for coming out and on our grand opening. I want to take this time also, you know, we've been coming here, I've been coming here before the city council now for, I'd say, you know, for at least about seven years, and we have been establishing the community giving programs for about 10 years, and that has been in existence without any state, federal, or local funding. So whatever funding we get, we deeply appreciate, and I want to take this time now to thank, you know, I want to take this time to think, and it's not to step on anybody's toes, because this is the first time since we've been come to the city council that we've received any type of support from any of the elected officials, and I want to take the time to thank, I want to take this time to thank Alderman Rivera for being one of the first elected officials to really support our organization. He has extended a donation of $150 where he had purchased Bam merchandise, as well as a cash donation, so I want to take this time to thank you for that, and because as an organization that is grassroots, that receive no type of other support, every dime counts, and I'm sure I thank you, you thank you, and the organization, thank you. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thanks, Mr. Blanks. Next up is Violet Ricker, 10 North Sheridan Road, Waukegan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you very much. My name is Violet Ricker. I'm the Director of Waukegan Main Street, which is our downtown development nonprofit organization, and I just wanted to give you a quick update about a couple of our businesses that are new to downtown, that are doing really well. First of all, Clockwise Theater at 221 North Genesee Street has moved into their new space. They're doing some construction, and they're getting their stage ready. They are currently looking for chairs, so if anybody knows of any chairs from any old offices or pretty much anywhere, if you could contact Madeline Seargle at Clockwise Theater or us at Waukegan Main Street, our phone number is 847-623-6650. If you have any chairs that you'd like to donate to Clockwise, they'd certainly appreciate it. But they're in there almost every night, having rehearsals and doing some really great stuff. The other business that is just about open is Dinosaur Tattoo Studio, which is down the street at 116 South Genesee Street. I actually memorized their phone number already. It's 847-599-TATO. Isn't that great? So they're about to open. Mark Hoffman just passed his health department inspection today, so he'll be having his business license in a couple of weeks, and so I'd encourage you all to get down there and check out both of those places, stop in and say hello to two of the new businesses we have. And on a personal note, I was on vacation for a couple of weeks, and I went to Detroit, and I just want to tell you guys I could not have been happier to come back here. It is a wonderful place, and I love our downtown, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Violet. I should also add to that list that the 10th Congressional Dems opened an office on Genesee Street over the weekend. I can't give you the number address, but it is just to the south of Soto's Furniture, and it's going to be a location for people to come to get legal advice, just kind of an outreach center. So we're very happy to have them down there. They did a really nice job painting the interior of the location, and Saturday, there must have been, I believe, during the course of the day, 200 to 300 people that were in attendance to their grand opening, and it was really well done, so we want to welcome them as well. So thank you very much for all of you that spoke. Next up, we will have the minutes. Take a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Moiseo, to accept the minutes of January 3rd, 2011, regular meeting and executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. I think what we'll do at this, just this moment, we're going to skip over item six, and we'll bring, we'll come back to that in a few minutes, so I'd like to go to committee reports and motions. First up would be Public Works Committee, Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works Committee came to order this past, last Monday, and approximately 5:00 in the afternoon, and we have one item on the agenda. We actually had three, but two of these other items are in Finance Committee because of bond proceeds that needs to be looked at. But on this agenda, item A, to award the construction for the Green Bay Road water main replacement to Berger Excavation Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $443,847.15, and this is coming out of the water revenue. A nice move.
We have the motion by Alderman Rivera, seconded by Alderman Conkin. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Sorry. Apologize for the sidebar. Thank you, Alderman Rivera. Next up is the Labor Relations Committee, which I chair. Item A is an ordinance approving an amendment to the agreement between the city of Waukegan and the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 473, for the purpose of adding the rank of captain.
So move, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Are we, are we, this is to put the agreement here on?
Yes, sir.
No.
Okay.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, yes, sir, Alderman Cunningham.
This is the-
Are you speaking into your mic, sir? Okay, thank you.
Is this for the increase, Your Honor?
This is for a lot of the-
To ratify this agreement?
Ratifying the unionization.
Of captains.
The captains.
And to, for the increase.
And a 4 percent, that's correct. And you have to remember that they did not get an increase before. They have gone, I believe, if I recall correctly, two years.
2008.
2008. So since they've had a pay increase at that rank.
Take us into the third year. Yes, I don't, I don't, Genesee Theater.
A 4 percent increase? And this is going to be effective until the end of this year?
I believe the contract is a one-year, one-year contract, if I recall.
The contract, Alderman, is, their contract would be February 28th of this year, so there are negotiations with all, with the bargaining unit for all three, for captains, for lieutenants, and for firefighters.
And it's not retroactive, bud?
And it's not retroactive.
It's not retroactive, retroactive or not, I mean, you know, from where they're at right now, I just, can we afford to pay 4 percent increases? That's the magic question. Can we afford to pay 4 percent increases across the board?
Well, it was part of the negotiations which were brought to you, chief. When was this originally brought to?
This was bought, brought in front of the aldermen as a variance agreement back 18 months ago.
18 months.
And obviously, we didn't move forward because of various reasons, but-
This average raise, Alderman, per year is about 2.6 percent.
Yeah, but we're not going back to 2 point. We're not, I'm not even looking about '08, '09. Forget about '08, '09, in my opinion. You're talking about senior-level staff members. I mean, there are certain things that, when you become management, you accept and reject certain things. You're talking giving 4 percent, and who gives 4 percent in this economy? I just don't, I don't understand it. I really don't. You know, I've been, I've talked about, 4 percent in this economy is unheard of in any institution. It's just unheard of. To give 4 percent, I don't, I don't know how you can do it. I don't know where your, your numbers come from. To give a 4 percent increase to anybody, anyone, heck, to give a 2 percent increase is a gift. We're giving a 4 percent increase?
For how many, how many days is that, again, in effect, the 4% is from now until?
Not 4%.
It's actually not 4%.
Well, it's not 4%.
It's 2.
It's 2.6% if you averaged it out over the years.
Right.
And right now, it's retroactive, is not, there's no retroactivity back to 2008, 2009. This would be effective November 1 of this year. And we were in negotiations for over a year with this, and the Alderman passed in 2009, in July, I think it was signed in 2009, the variance agreement that put the captains in the bargaining unit.
Okay, but putting them in the unit doesn't give them 4%. It just says you can be part of the union. It has nothing to do, you can get in the union now getting the money.
Alderman, we do have a point of order request here that the vote has been taken, and...
Okay. Right. I'm voicing my concern.
And we appreciate that.
And giving 4% to anybody in this union, in this city, is just not, I don't, I don't understand it. And you best believe other unions are going to take a look at this, and they're going to want that 4%. And they're going to be looking for it. They didn't get 4%.
It's, it's, well, okay, thank you, Alderman.
Next item.
Yeah, thank you.
We can pass it on all we want to.
Okay. Next up is the...
I tell you, when other people want 4%, we better get it given to them.
Alderman, please, we're moving on to the next committee.
I'm speaking my mind, Your Honor.
That's, that's good, but...
This is garbage.
In recognition, all right, let's go on to the Genesee Theater Committee. Alderman Newsom, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Genesee Theater Committee met this evening at 5:36. We had two items of new business. The first item on the agenda was a motion to accept the financial statements years ending April 30, 2009, and April 30, 2010. There was a copulation done by Baker Tilly, who are the city auditors, and they did a copulation of the assets, liabilities, all the numbers, financial numbers for the theater. And I so move, Your Honor.
We have a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Tempest.
To accept the financial.
Roll call, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
The second item on the agenda was to approve and execute the amended contract with SMG. And it did not make it to the agenda, so it's for discussion only. All the Aldermen have a copy of the amended contract. We will not vote on this item on the council floor. We're waiting to hear back from SMG, which has till January 31 to respond. And maybe at the first council meeting in February, we'll be able to move forward with this contract.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Tempest.
I might add, this contract is for through July 31, which is seven months. We've already extended it. As Edie pointed out, we're waiting for them to come back. On our side, we're happy with the negotiations that went forward, and we send back to them. We think it's going to be approved. If not, we go back again. But I think it's going to work out, and this will take care of our theater performance through July 31, which means, once we get this completed with our next council meeting, we're going to have to get back and see what we're going to do with the Genesee Theater, and what direction we're going to take. And that's where we stand, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, Alderman.
I would also like to add, each Alderman has a copy of the amended contract. And if you would desire to have a red line copy of all the changes, please let Noel know, and she'll get you a red line copy.
Thank you. Does that conclude your business?
Yes.
Thank you very much. It's something that we have been working long and hard on for months, trying to find some workable approach to the Genesee Theater. And it's not going to happen overnight, but I think we're getting close. So thank you very much for all the work you've put into this. We have no old business before us this evening. Under Communications, the first item is item A, which is a report on the draft of the April 30, 2010 audit. And we have a presentation that through Tina Smigowski in Finance to address this and get us all up to speed on it.
Gosh, man. I'll get to you guys and lay it up here.
Where are you going to put it?
I'm going to put it before.
Lay off bodies and get them 4%.
Good evening. This evening, we'll be presenting in draft format the financial audit for April 30, 2010. This is only an overview this evening, and there's many important facts and figures that are contained in the report. But due to, I could go on for hours and hours if you'd like me to, but in honor of time constraints, we'll just touch on the highlights. The final report is scheduled to be released in late January or early February, the bound, final hard copy. And at that time, we'll also post it on the city's website as well. This is the second year that Baker Tilly has served as the city's independent auditors. And Jason Coyle and Kay Ness are both here tonight from Baker Tilly, and will be available after this presentation to answer any questions that you have. I'd like to take this time to thank the city staff, as well as the Baker Tilly staff, for all of the hours spent on this very complicated and technical report. The city's basic financial statements are comprised of citywide financial statements, fund financial statements, notes, and other supplementary information. I will be focusing on the presentation of the citywide financial statements and just our two largest funds, which are the general fund and the water sewer fund this evening. The governmental activities are principally supported by taxes and intergovernmental fund revenues. Activities include general government services, public safety, public works, and economic development. The statement of net assets presents this information on the city's assets and liabilities, and the difference between those. This is very similar to a balance sheet in the private sector. And when the city's 166.2 million in liabilities are subtracted from the city's 184.7 million in assets, the net amount remaining is 18.5 million. That's referred to as net assets. Of that 18.5 million, in the bar chart here, 57.2 million is our capital assets, net up debt for the governmental activities. 11.9 million are restricted assets, so those are assets that are committed to some type of long-term liability. And then the city's unrestricted governmental assets is in a negative position of $50.6 million as of April 30, 2010. The governmental revenues did increase 4 million from the prior year to a total of $78.3 million. And expenses did increase, decrease, rather, by 32.6 million from the prior year to a total of 83.2 million. The discrepancy between revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year resulted in a $4.9 million deficit before transfers. However, in the prior year, the deficit was $41.5 million before transfers. So while the discrepancy between revenues and expenditure is still in an unbalanced position, the reduction in overall deficit from the prior year is a marked improvement. The general fund is the major fund component of the governmental activities, and accounts for the bulk of the city's revenues and expenditures on a day-to-day basis. The total, and this is a demonstration, this chart, of our budget, what our budgeted plan was versus actual performance. The total general fund revenues finished $1.3 million under the budget for a total of 52.3 million. The majority of the city's revenues performed poorly due to the negative impact of the economic recession. Expenditures exceeded budget by $11.4 million for a total of 68.1 million. Two things primarily contributed to this overage, the recognition of the employer contributions to the police and fire pension funds, which was not included in the budget, and correcting the prior year error of not booking the purchase of the Fountain Square property that was never shown on our books. So once these two factors were run through, that's why we see the overage there. So the actual result is that in the general fund, expenditures exceeded revenues by $15.8 million for the fiscal year. A good indicator of fiscal health is the city's unreserved fund balance, which is also called rainy day funds. And these are the amounts that aren't committed to other outstanding liabilities, and can be used for economic downturns or emergency purposes. And an industry standard that the rating agencies often use is 30% of your expenditure should be maintained in rainy day funds. And you can see, over the past three years, as expenses in the general fund grew from 63 million to 68 million, annual balances of 19 to 20 million would have been that ideal fund balance amount. But unfortunately, the city ended April 30, 2010, with an unreserved fund balance of a negative $1.6 million. Business-type activities of the city include the water and sewer department, as well as the motor vehicle parking fund. The business-type activities net assets, which is assets minus liabilities, ended the year at 57.8 million. And as demonstrated in the bar chart, 57, the 57.8 million is comprised of 60.8 million in capital assets, and a negative 3 million in unrestricted assets. The business-type activity revenues increased $1 million from the prior year for a total of 13.1 million, and expenses decreased 4.7 million from the prior year for a total of $10.5 million. This difference between revenues and expenses resulted in a surplus for the business-type activities of $2.6 million before transfers. In the prior year, the deficit was negative 3.1 million before transfers. So again, having revenues exceeding expenditures in this particular situation is allowing us to build those funds back up. The water and sewer fund is the major fund component of the business-type activities. And again, a budget-to-actual comparison, the total water sewer fund revenues finished $1.4 million over budget, while expenses finished $3.9 million under budget as a result of several capital projects being deferred. For rainy day funds, the target of 30% hasn't been met. However, last year's unrestricted or rainy day funds was a negative 2 million, and we've managed to bring that back up to a positive $100,000. So while we're still not at our goal of 3 million, we are making progress in the water sewer fund, unlike in the general fund. I will quickly review the city's long-term investments and obligations, and this includes capital assets, bond issues, and pension obligations. The city's capital assets, including land, building, and infrastructure, did decline in value from the prior year by $3.1 million. This is primarily due to depreciation, or the cost of the aging of assets, outpacing our reinvestment in those assets during the fiscal year. As of April 30, 2010, the city's general obligation debt totaled $91.6 million. And during the fiscal year, $30 million in new debt was added through the working cash bonds that were used to refinance the Fountain Square property over a long-term basis, and also provide liquidity for the city to release past due payments. When taken as a percentage of equalized assessed valuation, the city's overall debt position has improved from 8.39% of EAV in 2006 to 5.63% of EAV in 2010. It should be noted that 6.25% of EAV is usually considered the ceiling for a healthy debt limit. The city's employees participate in defined benefit pension plans, and the city's Illinois Municipal Retirement Plan was funded at 68% after an annual contribution of 1.3 million. The police pension was funded at 45% after an annual contribution of 3.3 million, and the fire pension was 45% funded after an annual contribution of $2.4 million. The city offers subsidized health insurance for retirees. And beginning last fiscal year, the city was required to annually calculate and report this long-term liability by the Government Accounting Standards Board. During 2010, the city expended $1.1 million toward this obligation. However, the total all-in cost of the benefit for the year was $3.1 million. So the city's current funding level for this obligation is at 37%. The city is self-funded for general liability and workman's compensation claims. In 2010, we started with $28.5 million in claims from the prior year, 1.6 million in new claims were added in 2010, and we paid out $16.5 million. Therefore, we closed the 2010 fiscal year with $16.5 million in unpaid claims. So that was the Cliff Notes version of the audit. That concludes my presentation for the evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And Jason is also here from Baker Tilly and wanted an opportunity to reintroduce himself.
Well, good evening. As Tina said, I'm Jason Coyle from Baker Tilly. I was the partner on the audit this year. And I was here before you about a year ago, doing the same thing as we did just this night. I don't really have anything to add to what Tina has to say. The only thing I did want to mention was that, as you may know, you know, when we come out to do the audit, obviously, we spend a significant amount of time with Tina and her team in the finance department. But obviously, we are ultimately responsible to you, the governing body, the city council. So we really work for you. So if you ever have any questions of us during the year, or at the end of the year when we're doing the audit, we'd be more than happy to discuss those with you. You can feel free to give me a call directly, or go through Tina and her staff, and they can get in touch with me, whatever you, whatever you'd like. Or if you don't have any questions, but you're just curious, you know, what is it that we do when we come out here to do our audit? You know, what is all involved in that? I'd love to talk to you and have a dialogue about that as well. So feel free to get in touch with me if you have any questions or would like a dialogue, because again, we ultimately do work and report to you, so.
Thank you, Jason. Next up, we have Dr. John Schwab, the Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm pleased to report that the filings for the, to the Illinois State Comptroller is complete. Also, the filings to the City Clerk and the County Treasurer are complete, and that very shortly, the filings will publish the, in the paper, the audit portion in the paper as required by law. And that would put to bed the catching up from the last couple of years when we were behind. We are now virtually on time. Any questions? None. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schwab. You know, what we have next up is, we have three items for discussion, and then we will get to the resolution for the court authority. I know you're waiting, but I wanted to kind of continue this. It's, you know, a lot around a wall here. The first item, and I'm not sure I'm staking the lead on this discussion. Okay, well, we have Tina who is going to, as was Ann Lynn. So the first item is to discuss the lakefront rates and changes. Stephen, some overview of what that will be.
Well, what transpired was, months ago, you all may recall that we sent out a, well, we requested ideas for revenue enhancements be submitted to the finance department. We compiled all of those. I think there were 30 in total. And we sent out a survey to city supervisors, managers, department heads, and elected officials. So what we did is we took those back and kind of ranked them based on their scores. And some of those are going to come back to you in the form of an ordinance next city council meeting for you to consider as far as increasing revenues. Some of them, however, weren't suitable to put in ordinance format. And we felt, Ann and myself and some of the other staff people felt that they probably should go to a committee for further study and analysis. So I think the first, you said lakefront rates and changes, was the first one that you wanted to?
Yes.
Talk about? So one of the ideas was charging for things like festivals, or camping, or other alternatives for use at our lakefront, similar to the state park, the state beach park. So because there's so many components that would come into play there with public safety, and public works, all those, adding electric and that kind of stuff, we didn't really feel that an ordinance could come before you without further discussion. So this is just staff simply bringing it before the council with the hopes that it could be sent to the appropriate committee for further study and analysis.
Okay. Do we need a motion to refer this to committee? No. We'll just, we'll just forward this to finance, and then maybe possibly could have, it might be a good time for finance and public works to have a joint meeting to review this. So we'll keep that in mind, but it will be referred back at least to one of those two committees, then we'll figure that out. But, you know, at the county, we used to have a lot of joint committee meetings, especially at this time of the year. And maybe that's not, maybe that's not a bad thing to take a look at. So we'll discuss that with the chairmans of those committees, and see if they're willing to do it. We can find an appropriate time and move it forward then. The next item up would be the discussion of the impact.
The next item up would be the discussion of the impact fees.
Impact fees, again, when we were researching this, we found more case law than we did good sample ordinances on that, so let the attorneys speak on that one.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Ann.
Sure. Impact fees and nuisance abatement actually is on there as well, and they go together, but they're different. They were ideas that were given in the top 30 ideas. Impact fees, we don't have an ordinance that applies to this, although it has been discussed over the last year and a half or so amongst the staff in the various departments. There are cities around the United States that have been successful in recouping excessive costs that have been used by problem property owners. And St. Paul, Minnesota is the most prominent example. These are cases, and we have properties like this in Waukegan, of course, where the, the fact that the property is a nuisance property, they have extreme number of police, fire, code enforcement, public works calls to the property on a regular basis. Obviously, this number of calls is not covered by the property taxes that are paid by the property owner for the property. And so what these cities have been successful in doing is establishing a baseline level of services that is reasonable, and then anything over and above that, there's a very complicated notice process and everything, but is ultimately assessed to the property owner. It's not something that, like I said, we don't have an ordinance like this yet. I think it would be good to send it to Judiciary Committee, possibly Public Safety as well because it does certainly, police and fire are the main impacts as well as code enforcement. It's not something that is a guaranteed immediate and regular revenue stream, however, because what happens, and this is what we really want, of course, is that as the property owners are assessed for excessive costs, the excessive costs go down, and that's because they begin to solve the underlying problems, and that's really what we, what we want. So it's not exactly a revenue enhancement ordinance, is what I'm saying. But that is the impact fees. And along the same lines is nuisance abatement. This is where, and Waukegan does have an ordinance on the books for nuisance abatement. It's called chronic nuisance abatement, and most cities have this, and we have in the past, it's run through the police department, and they work primarily with the state's attorney's office because the issues that exist at these chronic nuisance properties involve crimes as well as code enforcement issues and other problems at the location. So typically and traditionally, they've worked with the state's attorney as well as the Attorney General Civil Division on those properties. Again, not really a revenue enhancement ordinance. What it is, is a way to shut down chronic nuisance properties if they have three of a long list of problems at the property. We do have an ordinance to this effect. Fines can be imposed on the owner as well as shutting it down. So there is, you know, some revenue that would go to recoup the, the costs, again, of excessive utilization of city services at those properties. Right now, the state's attorney's office and the Illinois Attorney General have pretty much backed off enforcement, I think, due to manpower concerns, and they've kind of turned it over to the municipalities. Our ordinance is old. I'm not even sure how old it is. It's been on our city code for many years, and since we haven't been the ones really, from the legal side, enforcing it and working with our own police department, we've never updated it. So that, I think, needs to be updated, and I would suggest that that needs as well to go, these two could probably go in tandem to judiciary and public safety.
Thank you, Ann. And we will be moving those items as agenda items to the committees over the next probably 30 days or so. And next up, we've done the lakefront rates and changes, impact fees, and nuisance abatement. Tina, was there something else?
Surplus property.
Oh, I'm sorry, surplus property. I apologize again.
We've had this brought up not only by the aldermen but by citizens and in union negotiations, and it's often something brought up. Why don't you sell some property to plug the budget hole? So, you know, it is something that we look at. We have hired a broker to work on the Fountain Square property. As you may be aware, the Fountain Square property recently went through an appraisal process and was written down by $1.4 million, so we have lost market value on that property. But it is currently under, under contract to be brokered and reviewed. So the appraisal process is clean. It did not bring back good news for us, certainly, but I do believe that the Shaw Group is moving forward on marketing that property. The rest of the acreage that we have are small parcels, a lot of them are open land. The building department or development group can provide a listing of that. That was something too that we thought perhaps the judiciary committee could go through the list of properties that the city has that are either underdeveloped, underutilized, or, you know, were retained through some other source, and identify those for potential sale, and then look at some type of agreement to enter into with either an existing broker or another broker appropriate to try to move those properties. But there's really no ordinance we could bring forward to the city council other than perhaps a resolution of the intent to try to sell some of these properties. But it's something that has to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. The properties are very, very different from each other.
Okay, thank you. And it is something that we've had discussions with the Shaw Group and internal discussions about this, and, you know, the question has come up, well, why don't you just sell this property? It doesn't work like that. You have to have a buyer that has $6.1 million or $6.9 million for Fountain Square and our other pieces. We don't want to give it away. We don't want to lose a bunch of money on these pieces of property. We want to make sure we get the best buy possible, and we sell it in a market that is at least somewhat favorable to us, and that's not the market of today or tomorrow. It's going to come, but it's not going to happen overnight. But we are getting the values set. We, we have been, I mean, honestly, this is the first time it's really been on the agenda as an item, but I will tell you that we have been working on this since the first day I came into office. I, I requested that we start to look at our properties and what we could unload onto the market and what they would be worth. So it's frustrating, though, not to, not to have the properties as attractive as they really should be. They're in great locations. You look at the one on Fountain Square, Route 43 is, is, you can't find a more golden corridor than that. It goes all the way to, if I remember right, Lake Cook Road and beyond. I mean, it's, it's, but it's just not the right time, and we don't want to take a bath on it. So, you know, again, this is stuff that we'll, we'll go to committee and information-wise, and we'll, we'll obviously watch the market, and you got to have somebody willing to write a check. And so far, that hasn't happened, but we'll keep, we'll keep pushing. One moment, please. I first, I heard Greg first, and then Ralph.
God knows judiciary's got enough to do. You could put it in economic development if you want, we could try to do something with it.
I was kind of thinking the same thing.
Judiciary's got, you know, they got, as you can tell.
I wouldn't be opposed to it. Actually, I was thinking the same thing as, as we were doing the reading of this. I, I was thinking judiciary might not be the best, this might be an economic development issue. So we'll bring it to your committee, and we'll can make sure that we provide you with either written or verbal reports when you require them as to where we are on it. But I, I will tell you, we'll keep working. You know, we had talked to, I will say, I was a little disappointed that we had talked to the Shaw Group about locating, trying to find another theater, movie theater coming into the Fountain Square, and they advised us, and this is not that long ago, that the market for movie theaters was pretty dead. Well, it's not as dead as they thought it was. If you have been watching the newspaper over the last couple of months, they just announced that a major, I believe, 12-screen theater is going to go up in Green Oaks. Now, it's frustrating to see Green Oaks get something that really Fountain Square should get and probably has better access to, but that's the, that's the whims of the market. We have no control over that, and we're not going to give away the store to get something like that either. We have to retain some value to what we have. So, but we'll keep pushing it. We'll keep pushing it. Alderman Rivera.
But, you know, that begs the question, I mean, what are we doing to go out there and try to get these theaters? I mean, we need to be aggressive when it comes to that, too. I mean, they're not, we got to go to them. They're not going to come to us, you know. But I wanted to ask the Shaw, could they, how, would they think about, can they think about maybe selling, you know, divided, subdivided lots, you know, the property that we're talking? Wouldn't we get more money, you know, for, you know, instead of selling it whole? Are they thinking of, you know, maybe subdividing it?
That has been a topic, and we're looking at both, both ways.
Okay.
Both ways. They think that we could probably maximize our, our gains by going to smaller bits, but it will take longer to do it. So, but we're open to both ways, absolutely. That has been on the table since day one, that the fact that, you know, it might break up into smaller parcels. But it, you know, I have to tell you that we did have somebody that was dedicated to economic development. We had someone that spent her whole time doing this, going to the International Conference of Shopping Centers, going to, you know, other potential clientele for us, and we no longer have that person. So now the job has, has gone down to planning, to myself, to Noel. We do our, as much outreach as we can, but.
Well, that's what I, you know, I expect.
We are trying.
That we could try, I mean, you know, phone call, we have communication, internet, whatever.
We had, I believe David was at the last International Conference Centers, Shopping Centers in Chicago, and we were working in tandem with, I believe, was it the Partners, David? And then also the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. We all kind of worked together and looked for opportunities, but they don't, they're not falling in our laps, let's put it that way. But they're not falling into anybody's laps right now.
Well, Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that the people know that, you know, we are trying to.
Sure.
You know, get businesses into our community.
We do try, but again, they come with their hands out. They come with their hands out. I mean, here, an example being, we had a real good shot at a wonderful restaurant for Academy Square, and this would have been great. It would have been a game changer for downtown, but they came to the table with their hand out for $800,000 upfront money, not including TIF and other things. We couldn't do it. We didn't have the wherewithal to hand that kind of money over to them. And unfortunately, this game requires revenue. Every city that you see developing and bringing people in, they're giving them something. Even, you look at Wisconsin, they put whole packages of land, infrastructure, upfront money, all of that is on the table, and we just don't have the resources right now to do it. And given our fiscal situation for the next, you know, starting in May, that will even be worse. So while we'll do our best and we'll keep chasing leads and returning calls, it is what it is. This is the situation that we're in, so, but we will keep working. I mean, we have some success stories, but we don't want to, you know, it's, we don't want to announce things until we have them, until they're for sure. And so you'll be hearing some things over the next month or so, hopefully, that will at least show that some things are coming our way, but not as much as we would all like, so. Do we have any other questions for Tina in regards to the topics that were before us or for Ann? Seeing none, what I'd like to do at this point is go back to the, it was item six, resolutions and proclamations. Item A, the Waukegan Port District Resolution. I think that Corporation Council would like to make, say something very briefly about this before it's read into the record.
Yes, for the record, I would like to indicate that the resolution I'm about to read for consideration by the city council is based upon our understanding that the subject matter will in no way hamper or delay the dredging project at the harbor, but in fact would rather facilitate it and is something supported by the EPA. So I'll now read the resolution in that context. Please. Whereas the city of Waukegan works in partnership with the Waukegan Port District and supports its successful operations and growth, and whereas the city of Waukegan's master plan for its downtown and lakefront encourages the expansion of recreational activities at the lakefront, and whereas the Waukegan Port District is a financially self-sustaining municipal corporation, and whereas the city of Waukegan and Waukegan Port District believe that floating docks are a revenue generating asset in the marina, and whereas in order for the Waukegan Port District to continue and complete marina renovations, it will be necessary to remove approximately 90,000 cubic yards of sediment from the South Marina, and whereas the cleanup of Waukegan Harbor would require the construction of a temporary de-watering facility and permanent land-based containment cells on the OMC North Plant Site, which has been certified as a future development site, and whereas the Waukegan Port District has identified various entities that could benefit from a convenient economical location to dispose of dredged sediment, including but not limited to the United States Environmental Protection Agency, United States Army Corps of Engineers, State of Illinois, the City of Waukegan, Waukegan Harbor Commercial Tenants, the general public, and the Waukegan Port District, and whereas the Waukegan Port District believes a mutually cost-effective location could be achieved through the use of an in-lake confined disposal facility, CDF, thus creating a new land mass available for useful lakefront space, and whereas the Waukegan Port Authority believes the CDF would enhance the natural and cultural resources of the Waukegan Harbor and the Lake Michigan coastline, coastline enhancement being a priority of the State of Illinois. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of the city of Waukegan, at the regular public meeting held on January 18, 2011, unanimously resolved to further support the construction of an in-lake confined disposal facility by the U.S. EPA and U.S. ACE for the mutual benefit of the aforementioned parties.
Thank you. Well, we have a question.
What, what is it? The resolution, question, Your Honor?
Yes.
Usually, someone will request the court or the clerk to draft the resolution, and we approve it. I don't think anybody has a copy of that in front of us. We, we didn't hear about, I don't think it was proposed or, what, what, what are we doing tonight?
It was handed to me this evening, Alderman. I don't, I don't know anything about the background of it. Wayne asked me to read it. He has some voice issues this evening. I simply was reading it.
When we talk about, we hear containment, so.
Well, I apologize. I thought you had gotten copies of it, so I do apologize, but allow, may I, if I might give you some background on it? What this basically is looking to do is to create a new land mass right off the port so that, basically, you'll be able to have boat storage, you may have some other facilities, some more access to out there on the lake for fishing, for public fishing, a number of different uses. What it does is it takes the material from the harbor, and instead of, as Newt described, being placed on berms, it would be put into this containment disposal facility. And it's a three-layered process. The bottom layer has the clean sediment that's put in there by the, from the outer mouth of the harbor where they're going to be dredging. The middle layer will accept the material that has the PCBs in it, then the top layer will be clean, clean material again for a cap. It will be capped then, and at that point then, it can be, it can be used for some form of, of development or use by the port authority. And basically, what this does is it keeps all the material off of our property from the harbor. The city has no financial involvement in this whatsoever, won't cost us anything. Having, in fact, having spoken with the EPA this afternoon about it, we need to discuss, in fact, one of the topics of discussion in the, the executive session will be some new information regarding the cleanup. But they, they feel that this will be revenue neutral for them, will not cost them anymore, and timeline neutral for them. So we've had, we've had meetings about this in Springfield where we had the IEP, IDNR, Army Corps of Engineers, the EPA, all present to discuss it. And what we're looking for here is, again, the city doesn't have any skin as far as financial issues in this game at all. It's, it's, it doesn't mean anything to us cost-wise. What it does is it allows all of these parties to work together to create this facility so that we can then have an area on the OMC property that doesn't have any of the materials stored on it as it did in the past. You know, they have that one berm that's there already. This was going to be just an extension of it, so this gets rid of that if it, if it goes through. And what we're doing here is we wanted to do this proclamation so that we could send it to Senator Durbin, to Senator Kirk, to our new House, federal House reps, as well as the Springfield reps. We have had conversations with Senator Link, with Representative Mayfield in regards to this, and they have agreed to move, to work on legislation that will allow the transfer of bottom rights for this facility from the state to the port authority so that this can be located there. And again, as I said, it is a no-cost project to the city of Waukegan.
That's fine. Well, I just.
Well, I just, I'm taken aback a little bit because all this work and discussions and meetings have been done, and tonight, this is our, the first time-
I have to tell you, I apologize if it wasn't, I thought it was delivered to you before.
And after everything we've been through on the lakefront and the harbor, and the back and forth, who's right, who's wrong, the monies that have been put out, things that are still going on, I, I for one am not prepared to, to vote on anything until maybe we have a few meetings or somebody brings us some information.
We can do that.
And if, you know, obviously, we do have a stake on it because someone's asking us to-
Give our blessing.
Do, yeah, do the resolution and, and sign off on it, and there's no way, I'm speaking for myself that-
Would you prefer to hold it over then?
You know, I, I, I guess I've never held over a resolution before, but-
No, it's understandable, if you would like, we can-
Until we get some more information.
We could request the, the Port Authority to, I mean Duncan, you could answer questions now, but I don't think it's going to make any difference. I think they're gonna, we're gonna need more time on it, and I, again, I apologize, ladies and gentlemen, it wasn't my intention to sneak this on you tonight, I thought you had gotten a copy of this, so I do apologize for that, I take the, I will take the blame for that, it was not intentional. So it's something that we can certainly, what we could do is maybe at the next City Council meeting, if it would be sufficient, to bring a presentation on it, but also, if you like, I'm sure Duncan and staff would be more than willing to discuss what this means to the Port Authority, and give you all the, maybe a little more finer detail than what I can, and give you the insight that you need to feel comfortable with it.
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay, Alderman Larson, you wanted to make a comment, then Alderman Tempest.
I, thank you, Mayor. We've talked and talked and talked as a council about addressing issues that hit our desks literally an hour before the council meeting starts. We cannot operate that way, and it's happening time and time and time again, even with regular ordinances that aren't drafted in time for us to review them with staff. This is a big deal, because it involves our lakefront, and if there have been parties with the city who have been having deep, deep discussions with the state and the feds and the IEP and the Port Authority, and we don't know anything about it, and yet here we are somehow involved in saying, oh, that's great. It just can't work that way, and I'm glad it's being held over.
No, and that's understandable, as I said. I apologize to everybody here, it was not intentional. It was, it was an error. Now, in regards to some of the other ordinance, there, yeah, well, you know, we have fewer people working on things, so occasionally something like that does happen. Not intentional, but there have been a couple of errors, and, and again, nothing that we've tried to sneak past you is just that, a couple of things may have been dropped along the way, so, but again-
The message, I think, you know, we all want to do this the right way.
I agree, and we will do it, and we'll do it in a way that makes you comfortable. Alderman Tempest, then Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Your Honor. My comments are, the resolution is rather vague. I remember Congressman Kirk, now Senator Kirk, talked about a containment cell over by the Yacht Club, Port Authority. I don't know if that's the direction they're headed, I know it's off there. I think we need to see a, a presentation, a map of exactly what we're talking about, instead of just vote blindly, I'm not going to vote blindly, I'm going to see it in my eyes and know what I'm voting on, as we all want to do. And we want to better Waukegan and get things moving. And then you said no cost to the city, but I remember one time the bonds, the Port District bonds went through us, and I don't think they go through us anymore, do they? Maybe the gentleman can ask that question.
Now, the original construction of Marina was the Port District used the city's bonding power, paid the city back in full with additional payments to it above and beyond the original bond issue, the recent being two and a half years ago, $10 million investment that the Port District put into Marina was totally self-financed.
So, thank you, but I know at one time we did this.
And we paid dearly for it.
You paid dearly, well, you couldn't have done it without us, so if you want to get cocky about it, you know.
Okay, all right. Do we have any, Alderman Rivera, please.
My question is on Robert Rule's suborder, and it's, I'm going to refer this one to Newton Finn, our Corporation Counsel. I mean, how many times have I've heard up here, well, you know, we can't discuss this because it's not on the agenda. I know the agenda that was sent out to the Alderman, sure it has, you know, section, what is it, six resolutions and proclamations, the one that was sent to us, but it didn't have, you know, the, the actual resolution. But yet, Mayor, you said, you know, you put it on there this evening, didn't you just say that?
No, this was posted on Friday.
I'm talking about the resolution, the actual resolution.
Right. This, the, the fact that it was coming to you was posted on Friday legally, as part of the, the agenda, as far as I know.
Yes, what, what happens, Alderman, is I mail those agendas to you on Thursday, I have till Friday at 5:00 to complete the agenda. This particular agenda item was given to me Friday, I placed it on the final agenda, I posted it, I put it online, and it was brought before the council today, I, I just submitted it accordingly.
All right, I know, I thought I heard earlier you saying that it was brought to you today. I, I could have swore I heard that, and that's why, and that's why I am, you know, questioning the-
Right, no, it was, we, it was, it was posted on Friday.
You need so, what, 48 hours to-
If you go down and look at the agenda that's posted, you'll see that as an item that's on there, so.
But again, I, I thought I heard you say that it was brought to you today.
Alderman, I think I'd said I just saw it today when it was handed to me to read, and that is correct, I had not seen it ahead of time, it was, did not go through my office.
All right, very well.
Okay, all right, do we have any other questions? Alderman Moisio.
I just, I just wanted to echo the comments of Alderman Needham and Tempest and Larson, this, this is a big deal. We've gone round and round and round about this harbor, and dredging it, and this and that, and now we're talking about taking the stuff out of there and putting it somewhere, and there's no financial stake in this and that, but I think the people of Waukegan, they need to know what the heck's going on. And if we up here don't know what's going on, then how can we communicate to them what is going on? That's, that's not working together, that's not, whatever the reasoning behind it is, this is a contentious issue, it always has been contentious with, with all of us up here. We all have strong feelings about it, and I, they're just, I, I agree with Alderman Tempest, I gotta see this, I gotta, I gotta have, you know, something in front of me and all that, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote on a resolution or anything, anything remotely, until I know all the facts and figures of this, because when people ask me, they're gonna say, well, didn't you know about it? No, I just voted on a resolution, are you kidding me? No way, no way.
Your Honor, the-
Alderman Cunningham?
The Corporation Counsel said that he did not, he just saw through, who drafted the ordinance?
I believe-
Noel.
The resolution.
Noel did.
Noel, would you like to address that?
...base primarily on the Resolution of Port District, sorry. I drafted the draft version, Wayne put it in the final form.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll get a presentation, I think once you see it, you'll, you'll understand what the attraction is, and, and actually that it's, it's a very good project, and it's not something we were trying to sneak through, I thought you had gotten it, so I do apologize, that wasn't intentional, and we'll make sure you have all the information, I'm sure we can provide you with some of the drawings and, and information as to what it's going to be, and Duncan will have to rely on, kind of rely on you a little bit for some of that, but I would suggest that if it's possible, plan to be at the next City Council meeting, and to make a presentation on, as much as we possibly can, on this, and with the understanding that it's still a work in progress, and it's gonna, it's gonna take a lot of partners to make it happen, so. Okay? Thank you.
Hold on, Needham?
Pardon?
Hold on, Needham?
I'm sorry.
Hold on, Needham?
Yes, we have a request to hold it over by Alderman Needham, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we'll revisit that at the next City Council meeting, again, when there'll be, and again, don't hesitate to call the, the Port Authority to, to get some information if you have questions. Alderman Tempest.
I don't think holding it over is going to be, and just have it come up the next meeting. I need to see a presentation, exactly what they're talking about, so we all know, just holding it over ain't going to do a darn good a bit.
Well, we'll bring the presentation to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's the plan.
In a committee meeting, or?
We can bring it, well, we could bring it to committee, or we could bring it to the next City Council meeting.
I'm wanting to come to the meeting, but I want to-
So you can see it.
Yes, absolutely.
But we can also provide you with packets of information between now and then, so you can, you can see that and review it. And I think once you see what they're talking about, where it's to be located, you'll feel a lot more comfortable with it.
They won't be paying dearly, will they?
No. No, this is already prepared, so, we'll get you what we have. Alderman Rivera, did you have another comment?
No, no, I'm just saying that we really need, as Aldermen up here, you know, whether it's three at a time, whatever it may be, to really look into this and discuss it, so there's, you know, it's, you know, I, the point that we were trying to make up here, and I, I don't want to keep on repeating what everybody's said up here, is, and with respect to the Waukegan Port District, you know, and, and, and that governmental body, but it's, it's like a disrespect to our governmental body up here, you know, by not having all this information for us to make a decision. But we need to all look at it, because I know there's, there's, there's more to it than what, what, what this resolution means, so, and that's what we got to look at.
Well, and that's fine.
We got to look at, we got to look at always what's in the best interest for the City of Waukegan.
Draw your conclusions from what you see. Now, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be so quick to say there's more to it than what you've seen, because it is a fairly straightforward-
I don't know, when we look at it, we'll go from there.
Yeah, and you get a look at it, because it's, as I said, once you see it, you'll see where it is, the fact is, it has no impact on city, city property whatsoever, does, it's not something that the City of Waukegan, as a governmental body, is involved in, from the standpoint of whether we have to approve it, whether we have to pay any money out to it, anything like that. We're looking mainly for support, but I think you, take a look at it.
Yeah.
And we'll get it to you, in fact, I, I will tell you this, that tomorrow, we will just, I will get to you, we will have delivered to your homes tomorrow, this information with what I have, and then you can read it, and then based on that, you can give Duncan a call, ask him all the questions, I'm sure he'd be willing to give you as much information as possible, and then what we could do is set up a presentation at the next City Council meeting, so everybody can see it, and then decide where you want to go from there. And I think putting it out there for the public to see, I don't have a problem with it, I mean, there may be some things that might be still executive related, but I think they can give you a clearer picture as to what it is. So, okay, Duncan, it's my fault, I take the blame for the fact that they didn't get everything, I apologize for that, and I'll be in touch with you tomorrow. Okay, thank you. So we now, we will go to new business and recommended, recommended actions by Corporation Counsel, Item 10, Item A. I don't have the entire sentence on Item A in regards to the payroll. Somehow, though, that got left off of my copy. Under new business, again, Item A, approved payroll dated January 12, 2011, in the amount So take a motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest, roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item B, approved bills dated January 18, 2011, in the amount of $1,527,103.17. Motion by Alderman Needham, seconded by Alderman Tempest, roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item C, we have a request from the Angel Drill Team to hold their annual tag days in Waukegan on July 15 through the 16th in 2011. We have a motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it, thank you. Item D, approve a raffle sale application for Waukegan Township Park Place. We don't have dates on that, on my, on the copy here.
That's, that's just the process that everybody's got, got to go through to get the rap-
To get the raffles approved, so we take a motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Conkin, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, thank you. Now, Item E is a discussion item, I believe, at this point, regarding the Ferguson Group contract renewal, and who is going to be heading up this discussion? Do we have anybody that, is Noel?
She's talking to Mr. Duncan out there, she's coming.
I think Noel was going to provide information on this to you. And, and again, I remind you, the question was asked, is this our lobbyist group? And yes, it is, so-
Right, the Ferguson Group is our lobbying firm. Their contract, their initial contract was a 16-month contract, which expired at the end of December, so this before you is a contract renewal, same terms. Really, the only change is that the contact person, rather than being the Director of Governmental Services, is now me, and it's a 12-year, a 12-month renewal through the end of the calendar year.
And it costs roughly $100,000?
Just under, yes.
That's one job. I voted against this last time, and you know, I'm gonna give you the same speech I gave you last time, and the speech was, you have Kirk, who owes Waukegan dearly, he got a start through the Waukegan Alderman when he ran for state rep, remember, Needham? You helped him on that. Then, and now he's a senator, he got Durbin. We have elected representatives, we should go to them when we want something. Why do we give a lobbyist group, a lobbyist group, I have run, running against me, a lobbyist, pay them money to do what our representatives should be doing for them? That's, I take, maybe we ought to hire a lobbyist for the sixth ward, I mean, we could maybe get them to get certain things done? What do you, what do you elect representatives for? To take care of your needs as they see in the different cities? And to have a lobbyist at $100,000 when that's one job? I don't need that lobbyist, I really don't. I'm sorry, Mayor, but I feel strongly on this, and thank you for your patience with us.
Certainly, thank you, Alderman.
You're going to be patient with me, aren't you?
No problem. It's an easy thing to do. Alderman Rivera.
You know, I voted for, you know, lobbyist, and I supported that, but Noel, have they, what have they done in this past year? Could you-
I'd be happy to-
Give us anything that, you know, that they've done for us, in terms of bringing in dollars?
Absolutely.
Grants, or whatever it may be.
Sure, and you'll see in your packet and in my cover memo to that packet, the initial document in the packet is the contract renewal. Following that is the prior contract, the initial contract we had with the Ferguson Group. And after that, you'll see a sample letter, we, we applied for seven different projects for the city to Senator Durbin. Senator Durbin was the only elected official that we had last year at this time that was receiving requests directly. We submitted seven projects totaling four point, almost 4.4 million in requests. Of that, Senator Durbin selected one of the projects, which is the gang unit suppression program for the Police Department. We had requested $500,000, he selected it for $450,000, so over 10% of what we requested in total, Senator Durbin has selected for funding. And the, the earmarking process this year, because of all of the things that are going on in Washington, is delayed beyond what it normally is at this point, but as far as we know, that project is still on the table, and we could be receiving that $450,000.
Now, before you go on, aren't we, which I don't want to see, you know, aren't we cutting back some of these programs that we have in our city, you know, the gang crime Is that, is that true, Mayor?
Well, there's been reorg-
So that's the case.
There's been reorganization within the department to make sure you have the maximum number of people on the street at every hour that's possible, so some of these, some of these units have been dissolved or have been altered. Now, the fact is that the chief is not here this evening, and I think you, you probably should discuss-
I can go talk to my-
Yeah, but some of this has changed, and the goal is to get the, as many people out on the streets as possible. That was the intent, so it wasn't that we were ignoring a problem.
Would that still, would that affect our funding for that, or the grant that we're looking for there?
This, this grant program actually, under our current situation where we have pulled back or expect to pull back some officers so that they're back on patrol, this program helps support some other at-risk youth programs in the community, so- So it's not just police enforcement, but it's also gang prevention through programs for youth. And you'll see a detailed description of it, it's more than you want me to go through here tonight in detail. But some of the money stays directly with the police department, some goes to nonprofit agencies that serve at-risk youth, to help prevent them from joining gangs, keep them busy and, and involved in beneficial activities in the community.
We have Alderman Moiseo first.
You know, these times, you gotta look at your investment. We gotta have a lobbyist go to, to Senator Durbin, we got it backwards. Simple, we're all elected officials up here. You know how you get to an elected official? You have a million people call them and tell them, I won't vote, vote for you the next time you run for reelection. That's how you get to the elected officials and get them to, to get the needs of a community. You don't, we don't need to send a lobbyist. I was all for the lobbyist last time, 'cause I thought it could maybe give us some investment. But if it hasn't given us an investment now, I'm with Alderman Tempest. I can't support this, when we're gonna have to be laying off people. And I'm telling them, I'm paying somebody in Washington $100,000 to get us what? And I, and I understand about, maybe it comes later down the road. I, I understand that. I'm not that short-sighted, but when we are facing the financial crisis that we're facing, I think we have to think about that. And, and I, I think that it was maybe a good idea to maybe try to get a lobbyist to get us some money, but if they have, it's just like everything else. If you're giving somebody money, what have they gotten?
Right.
If they haven't gotten us anything, then I'm sorry, we can't pay you anymore. That's how I have to look at it.
The only response I have to that is if Congress had approved this year's budget back in September, October, it would, this item that we've been selected for by Senator Durbin would have been in that budget. Well, they've delayed, they've delayed approving the budget.
Alderman Larson.
Well, the, you know, the, the fight for the crumbs out of Washington is a difficult one. I think we all acknowledge that. But I think the focus for our lobbyists has to be on economic issues, brick and mortar, lakefront cleanup, move the railroad, you know, forget the, you know, forget the, you know, forget, that's more important for the future of Waukegan than a, a social service type of grant. Where are we with real money to improve and move on our master plan? That's what we need, not this.
Of the seven projects that were submitted to Durbin, off the top of my head, I believe five of them were brick and mortar projects, they were infrastructure-related projects. Those are not the projects that Senator Durbin selected. They were submitted equally, and pursued equally.
Well, my answer to that statement is, what the heck is our lobbyist doing if he has access to our legislators, and he can't present what we really need? Then what the heck? He has to set the priorities, that's what we're paying him the big bucks for, and if he can't, and I know there's some kind of familiar, familiar relationship with a senator, with this lobbyist group, they're not doing their job. We have to let the focus be on what we need to kickstart our economic redevelopment, period.
Alderman Larson.
If they don't get that message, they're not worth the money.
If I could, just one, real quick correction on that. I think you've got the bond aid, the bond counsel mixed in with the lobbying. And, well, yeah, it's frustrating that you don't get everything you ask for.
Nothing.
But you have to be in the game to be able to get it, so, but Alderman Needham.
First of all, we know you're not the whipping post, Noel.
Yeah, we've worked here long enough, this is not the first time I've been the whipping post.
But you're our direct connect here. A couple of questions. Our representative with the Ferguson Group, do we have one representative you work with, or?
We have one primary contact, he's a partner in the company, Trent Lehman. I also work closely with his associate, Charmaine Makin. But all of the staff at the Ferguson Group is available to us. Those are the two people that I deal mostly with, that I'm on a first-name basis with. And Trent and I recognize each other's voices when we call.
Okay, and when you said we submitted several proposals, who do, who do we submit those to, directly to the agencies in Washington, or?
Trent and I met with staff here, senior staff, bless you, last year around this time, and started going through all of the projects that were on the table for each of the departments, particularly the things that were in the capital improvement plan, looking at things that might be priorities for federal funding. The Ferguson Group was instrumental in helping us pick through the things that had the best chances at getting funding. We had, you know, 50 projects that we were looking at that were priorities for us. So they helped us identify those. They worked with me directly, and I worked with staff to come up with project descriptions that really helped make the case for those projects. And then they took those and presented them to Senator Durbin directly, by his, all of his various deadlines for different programs, and argued for all of our projects. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, and I just, I was, not knowing how the process works, I'm just kinda curious with, we have a lobbyist, our hired gun, and we do our diligence and submit things properly, and we get picked for one, I guess that's not our choice, but...
A lot of people got a lot less than that.
No, I'm sure.
You know, many people didn't get picked for any. So, you know, we, personally, I thought that it was great that one of our projects got selected, particularly since we only had one elected official that was, elected official that was taking requests for, for earmarks, basically. So, you know, in a lot of states, in a lot of areas, they were in a much better position because they had multiple elected officials they could go to for these types of requests, and we had one that was taking them. So that was our only chance.
But there are a lot of other projects out there, and money's coming in that you're better off if it's not an earmark, it's a consistent thing that comes in all the time.
Yes, that's true.
Or the earmark's a one-shot deal, and...
Yeah, and Ferguson Group, actually, in the past six months or so, has added some staff members with grant expertise. I participated in a, in a webinar about five or six weeks ago with their staff about pursuing grant funding, and that's another focus that they're starting to take, in addition to the earmarking and the, the more traditional lobbying efforts focusing on federal grant opportunities. So that's something that we'll be able to take advantage of too, if we were to renew the contract.
Alderman Newsome.
I have a question, Noel. You said Senator Durbin was the only one that was taking a request. Do you know who's gonna be taking requests the next 12 months? How many elected officials?
Yeah, that's a good question. Because the federal budget has been, for the current year that they're under, has been in limbo, nobody has made absolute decisions. Ferguson Group fully expects that Durbin will continue to take requests. They've been developing a relationship with Mr. Dold, and that's going really well, and they believe that he will be taking requests as well. Kirk is unlikely, but that's been the case for a number of years, that he's been uninterested, disinterested in taking direct requests.
What if our chance, what are, what are our chances of getting selected a second time by Durbin?
I think...
For another project?
Yeah. I, this is purely speculation on my part, but I think our chances are good, you know, I think he, he knows who, what our community is, he knows where we are, he knows that we're important in, in the area, in the region. So I think he looks favorably upon us, and certainly, relationships that any of you have with him can only benefit us, those kinds of positive relationships. So I can't say for certain, you know, I'd like to say it was, it was a sure thing, but I can't say that. But I think things are looking even more positive in the coming year, because Ferguson Group has, has grown their practice, brought in the grant expertise, and they're developing, and we have new elected officials in new roles that we can look to for assistance. So there's opportunity there that wasn't there before. Whether we can take advantage of it, only they can say.
You know, I think one of the things I'd like to, to point out is that, that they did do their job. If you look at the one grant regarding the gang suppression, now that's a $400,000 grant, that's a four-to-one ratio over what we pay. You know, from the very beginning, when I brought this to you, I, I was very upfront. There was no guarantee of success, absolutely no guarantee, but you had to have some skin in the game to be able to at least get something. I think that, the fact is, the Ferguson Group cannot control the fact that they are not voting on budgets, and they're not moving things forward, and things get stuck, and we end up being on the losing end of it. It's very frustrating, and you hate to have that happen. But we have to remember, cities like Rockford and other cities have lobbyists, and they're, they do have people representing, whether it's in Springfield or DC. So if we, if we, if you decide not to do it, and I can understand the logic that you, you know, the $100,000, you, you, again, you know, given the cuts that have been put forth in, in regards to the levy, that's gonna mean possibly some jobs, but if we're successful in this coming year with more grants, more jobs could be saved, and more money could be gotten. So I think when you look at it from a success standpoint, getting 400,000 on a $100,000 investment, and I think we still probably have a chance of getting that, it's not dead completely, is not bad. It really is not bad. We've made worse investments in our money and our time.
Yes, we have.
And mistakes. And I think that, again, I have faith in this group, 'cause they proved themselves over and over at the county. We saw them bring in money. But again, it's your decision. The city council has the purse strings. I can only present to you what I think are gonna be good options, that'll keep us in the game, that'll keep us at least on the, their radar level. And the thing about working with these guys is, it's not necessarily meeting with the senator. That's not the meeting necessarily to get something done. It's the fact that they know the right staffers, who then sit down with the senator and say, this is a good project, Senator, we'd like you to, we'd like you to push it forward. We all do that here, at the committee level. You know, every committee meeting, you have staff bringing you agenda items, things that they'd like to see go forward, that they think are important. It doesn't work any differently at the federal level, it's just busier and bigger. So it's something that I think that we need to give some consideration of. Before we cut this off, what does it really mean to not to have some direct tie into Washington DC, given as complex it's, it's gonna become? As problematic as it's gonna become? You have this whole new bunch that has come in, that are, are absolutely dead-set on cutting out more and more and more. The fight's gonna get more and more fierce for diminishing resources. That's about all I have to say on it. So I think that unless we have any other questions regarding this, it's not an action item this evening, I don't believe. This was for discussion. We'll get, you know, get back to us, let us know. We will maybe discuss it in finance and see, see where you want to take it. But again, I do understand why you might be concerned about voting for it, but, as I said, we've rolled the dice before on what I would consider to be longer odds. So, thanks, everybody. Thank you, Noel. Appreciate your input on it. We will go into 11, which is ordinances and resolutions. Larry, you're all right with still, Alderman Tempest? Are you still okay with item 11 doing that as an omnibus?
To take them all.
To take them all at once? Okay. I'd like to take a motion to take on item 11, items A through V, to be taken under one roll call vote. And we have a motion, I'm sorry, the first, who said the, so moved? Alderman Cunningham, seconded by Alderman Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, it requires a roll call.
Oh, yeah.
I apologize.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
The ayes have it, thank you. Our corporation counsel will very quickly read the items into the record, and then we will do a roll call vote.
They were read at the last meeting in full, I'm going to read them, I'm going to refer to them sketchily this evening, because they're already in the record, and they're laid out tonight in writing. Item A, calendar 2305, 2700 West Belvedere, amendments to existing CUP. 2308, 603 North Genesee, R4 to R3. 2309, 604 North Genesee, R4, R3. 2310, 607 North Genesee, from R4 to R3. E, calendar 2311, 611, Genes, North Genesee, R4 to R3. RMF, calendar 2312, 613 North Genesee, R4 to R3. Item G, 2313, 614 North Genesee, R4 to R3. Item H, 2314, 619 North Genesee, R4 to R3. 2315, concerning 620 North Genesee, R4 to R3. Bring us to item J, number 2316, that's 624 North Genesee, R4 to R3. K, number 2317, 625 North Genesee, R4 to R3. L, 2318, 620 North Genesee, R4 to R3. M, calendar 2319, 629 North Genesee, R4 to R3. N, number 2320, 633 North Genesee, R4 to R3. O, number 2321, 638 North Genesee, R4 to R3. P, number 2323, 710 North Genesee, R4 to R3. Q, 2324 is the number, 714 North Genesee, R4 to R3. R, calendar number 2325, 719 North Genesee, R4 to R3. S, 2326, concerning 720 North Genesee, R4 to R3. T, number 2327, concerning 1022 10th, R4 to B2. U, 2328 is the calendar number, east side of Thaxter Avenue, R4 to B3. Lastly, V, zoning calendar 2329, 3024 West Belvedere, a CUP for a payday loan establishment.
I'll take a motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Moiseo, to approve the items as read. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
The ayes have it, thank you.
Mayor, could I leave just to make a very brief, a couple of remarks? I wanted to thank Alderman Rivera for once again bringing to the attention of my office in the city, this marvelous conservation project in Fields of Cambridge subdivision in his ward. We have made the front page of the Liberty Prairie Journal praising the project. This is a, the core parcel of, I believe, the largest undeveloped area of natural prairie left in Lake County. And we've now have a homeowner association that is working hard to help various agencies preserve it, and I wanted to thank Alderman Rivera for bringing that to our attention so that we could fully support it. I also wanted to thank Alderman Tempest, who brought to my attention a property in his ward, that is also, I guess, concerns nature, because it's a house that's occupied by a colony of raccoons. It's got a couple of huge holes in it, and Alderman Tempest wanted us to address it immediately. And I've talked to Ann Lynn and Russ Tomlin, and we're going to be doing what we can to get this property fixed up. I just wanted to urge all the aldermen here, when you have a problem building in your ward, if you could please give me an address, if you're getting complaints, or you see it yourself, that helps me to ride shotgun on it. So again, I all extend that invitation to everyone.
And Newton, I also want to thank, not, and your staff too as well, Amy, who did a wonderful job too in following up on that as well. Thank you.
Coach, I'm, Alderman Tempest, I'm a little surprised you didn't call me, you know, we are a tag team on that stuff.
I couldn't hear that. Say that again, Alderman.
I said, Alderman Tempest, I'm a little bit, you didn't call me on the raccoon problem, you know, we are a tag team on that.
We gotta do things sometimes in a different way.
Okay, thank you. We're on item 12, which is Alderman's Time. Following the Alderman's Time, we will take a brief five-minute recess and then go into executive session. executive session.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this evening, I, you know, voted for the 4% raise for the firemen, and I know Alderman Cunningham had brought that up. But, you know, basically, if you look at it, you know, it's two, what, 2%? Little over 2%? I know we're coming to renegotiations again, coming up in, what is that, a teen on, this week? Next week? So, so it really is not, you know, 4%. But, again, I just wanted to, when the fire department, the last time when we were, you know, going through our economic, you know, situations that we had here in the city, you know, they stepped up to the plate. And to turn your back on them now, you know, I, you know, I'm not going to do that. So I feel like, you know, they stepped up now this time around. You know, they do a great job as well, and I hope that the rest of the unions, you know, that we work, that we'll work well together to see if we can come together and work things out so we can, for the best of the city. Second of all, I want to thank Tom and Public Works. I know this weekend, you know, we've been trying the best we can to still provide top service in the city. For example, Sunday, I know, you know, with the snow and ice we had, especially with freezing rain, you know, that's tough. You know, you need a full crew out there, but yet, with this minimum staff that we had out there for Sunday, they did a terrific job. The focus was the focus on the main arteries that we did. The luck that we have is that when the temperatures are at, you know, 29, 30 degrees, that helps us. You know, if the temperatures were to go down to about 10 degrees, yeah, we might have had a problem then. But fortunately, we've been lucky on that. Following day, you know, we hit the pavement full. It took us all day to clean up the way the road, the way the city looks now. So, good job, kudos to you. So, other than that, I know it was Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday yesterday, and I attended several events. One in particular was at Bonnybrook with the Waukegan Township and Patricia Jones and the speakers that spoke. It was an awesome evening, or day, it was at nine o'clock in the morning for the breakfast, and it was just a wonderful day. And I know Dr. King taught me, you know, one thing that I've learned from Dr. King is, is community, community service. You know, do something for your neighbor, do something for your friend, or whatever it may be. You know, that's what I learned from Dr. King, is do something for humanity. And it was an enjoyable day. So, again, thank you very much, Mayor.
Alderman Cunningham.
Thank you. Three, three small things. One of them, to Alderman Rivera's point, I think the rest of the aldermen, I think from appreciation standpoint, no one appreciates services more than I do. If you take a look at per capita, the first ward is one of the lowest, so a service organization is probably the best organization in order for me to function effectively and efficiently in the first ward. I don't think this is about not appreciating or giving deference or turning your back on anyone. I think this is about dollars and cents. That's my personal opinion, and I stand by that. With that being said, I ask the fire chief, I ask the fire chief to get these, the questions that I have ready, because I'm going to be speaking with you first thing in the morning regarding this. One of them on this recap of recognition of fire captains in IAFF, which should include plus a 4% increase, that's what it should include. But question, transfers, duty trades, and job duties, 20.3. It says, "Regular duty trades for captains shall only be made with another captain or battalion chief, so as long as battalion chief is not performing bargaining work unit." Great idea, like that. Can you help me with this one? 20.5, "For all, not just captains, change the 'shall' be evaluated to 'may' be evaluated." I want to make sure I get this right. Are you telling me that this contractor was approved tonight telling me that captains may be evaluated? The evaluator should meet with the station's lieutenant or captain. You don't have to answer that tonight unless you want to, but I do expect, when I call you in the morning, that we kind of go over this. So the question will be, are we changing this language to "shall be evaluated" to "may be evaluated" by senior-level officers? Then as we move on, it says, 20.6A, "For all, not just captains, same day, same as above, changing 'shall' to 'may,' performance evaluations for captains. Captains may be evaluated at least once each calendar year. Performance evaluation shall be in writing and shall be completed by an evaluator who has reasonable familiarity with captain's job performance during the period covered by the evaluation." I'm assuming that that means deputy chief and battalion chief should only be evaluated. I'm assuming that. But according to the way this read, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not as clear as that. So those two questions I asked at you, that you and I touched bases in the morning so I can have a better understanding, so when I'm out there speaking, and as a reason why I approve or disimprove, I'm able to educate not only others about what has happened, but this too. And to the 4%, if I'm not mistaken, there were a lot of senior-level managers in the city's organizations who did not get a raise in '08 and '09. If I'm not mistaken, that did happen. Now that someone is coming into the union, now they're getting a raise. I think that's unfair. If that's the case, give them all the raise. My opinion. So I don't think this is about me turning my back, I don't think it's about me not disliking. As I said before, these guys are professionals, guys, but the personnel, they are professionals at what they do. They're going to do their job at the best of their ability regardless of what we give them. I truly believe that, I'm confident in that, I have no bounds about how they're going to perform their duties. I'm just looking at, from my own personal experience, being a hiring manager, being an evaluations manager for the last 10 years in a major corporation, it doesn't make sense to Sam. If it doesn't make sense to me, I'm a fairly intelligent man, it can't make sense to the layperson who I have to come out and ask for my vote. That's what I'm asking for. Thank you, chief. Second, as far as the Martin Luther King celebration, I attended as Alderman Rivera, as John, city clerk, fifth ward Alderman, Ms. Newsome, a great breakfast celebration that was, that included a host of individuals, I think just coming together as that community, that community-type environment, so it was very, very comforting. Late on Sunday, that evening, attended a great, great, after the Bears game now, after the Bears game, a great celebration of Dr. King at First Corinthian Missionary Baptist Church, a host of speakers, a great choir, I think it was on the front page of the Newsome. And as always, I am a recipient of some of the things that Dr. King's and others fought for. I think it is only fitting that I continue to do what I can do, hopefully, to encourage young people, younger than I am, of course, to get into this thing of community service, being a good neighbor, and most important, everybody, just being a good productive citizen in our society. Thank you. I predict the Bears going to win by 20 to 0, and we're going to be at the Super Bowl, and the mayor's going to buy tickets for all the aldermen. Thank you.
Alderman Conken.
Thank you. Love their prediction. Just a couple of things along with the mayor's condolences to Mr. Murphy and his family. I'd also like to extend my condolences to a former Waukegan firefighter, Mr. Copenhar, who passed away also, I remember, growing up. And so I'd like to extend my condolences to his family. Next thing, I didn't mention it last time, I probably should have. I attended the polar bear plunge, it was put on by the park, this was put on the lakefront in the first year, like I say, you read it in the paper. No, I didn't go in, but it was a cold day. I had a relative in from Virginia Beach, and he said they did something similar in the ocean, he says, "It's nowhere near as cold as it was here," so he had a lot of respect for everybody running into the water. And they had approximately 570 people doing it, so I'm assuming that the parks then raised a lot of money for their program, Special Olympics, I believe, Northern Illinois Special Olympics. So congratulations, everybody, and anybody that wants to, just keep it in mind, you've got a whole year to remember and get ready for it for next year. And lastly, some of the aldermen attended a recognition event for the basketball team a couple of weeks ago. They beat Maine South, and it was a good time, and anybody who wants to see some good basketball, go out, those kids are fast. That's all.
Alderman Moisio.
Yeah, just a couple of things. We got into that little discussion about the lobbyists, I think that's part of our problem, is I think the people in Washington sometimes forget who they work for. I mean, if it's about communication, Alderman Needham, I don't, I'm assuming he still has communication with Senator Kirk now, I mean, as Alderman Tempest said, Alderman Needham was with him from the very beginning. I don't know, if it's about reaching out, you know, I'm not trying to put the pressure on Alderman Needham, but it's, I mean, he can do it for nothing. I mean, he can do it for nothing compared to paying somebody $100,000. I understand the job of a United States senator is very arduous, but I think they have to remember who they work for and what their, what their charge is. And maybe that's, and that's the problem, I think, with all of our higher-level politicians is they forget. And I know nobody up here forgets who they work for. I mean, our phone numbers are published, and you can call at least me anytime, you know that. And we don't forget who we work for up here. That's it.
Alderman Newsome.
One item I'd like to mention, not on the city's part of the snow shoveling, but for residents, has been brought to my attention, that when you're plowing or shoveling your snow, not to push it out in the street has been an issue. And also to think about your neighbor, especially in the apartment complexes, where you're trying to shovel out the driveways, the parking lots, not to push them up, push it up against someone else's curb where they can't put their garbage cans out. I've had an issue up Williamsburg and Georgetown where I guess they have a hired service that pushes it out on the curb so they can't put their garbage cans out. So just think about your neighbor when you're pushing that snow, not to push it in a place where it would hinder someone else from doing what they need to do. And that's all I have.
Alderman Tempest.
I'm going to pass this evening.
Alderman Needham.
I'll pass also.
Alderman Larson.
Well, I'll take their three-minute at times and make it nine. Just kidding. A couple of short notes. Green Bay Road project, there's going to be a meeting at Beach Park Middle School Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at Beach Park Middle School to discuss the proposed widening of Green Bay Road, the long wished-for, you know, how many decades has this been wished for? A lot of that goes through the 8th Ward, so I encourage anybody living along Green Bay Road up to Sunset Avenue to, you know, see what they're going to do. And hopefully, it'll be done before, you know, the next decade is out. But it's important, I think they have every intention of moving forward with the Green Bay Road widening. Great job, the Public Works, I think I'm not, probably not the only alderman who gets calls early in the morning, "Where's the snowplow truck?" You know, it's 6:30 in the morning. Our guys are out, you know, they have their routes, they know that they got to clean the main thoroughfares and then do the side streets. Anybody out there that's listening or watching, please have your, you know, some patience with the great job that Public Works does. Waukegans cleanup crews are far superior to any other community around here, even if it's not as fast as you think it was two years ago, it is. And they're going to do their job at the best of their ability, and I just want to reinforce that message. The mayor talked earlier about some of the, you know, the being proactive in Illinois versus Wisconsin as far as business and economic development is concerned. Newt, I think you're very close to reviewing an agreement for a new TIF district encompassing the 8th Ward. I think Russ Tomlin has been in charge of your staff. We've got to get that done right away. There's jobs involved, and we have shown over the last few years that we've been able to compete, attract businesses from other communities, retain businesses that are thinking of going to other communities through some innovative programs and establishments of TIF districts. So, you know, we're doing okay. We could always do better, but the staff of Waukegan, Russ Tomlin and his crew, these aldermen up here, we all support and do whatever we can to grease the skids to keep jobs in Waukegan, and, you know, that's most important in my mind. So keep up the good work there, and Newt, make that a priority over there in your office to make sure that that happens, please. Thank you, that's all.
That's it? Great. All right, well, I'll take a motion to go into executive session for the following matters: real estate issues and negotiations, pending and potential litigation, and settlements of claims. Motion by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman Conken. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Needham.
Aye.
Alderman Larson.
We'll take a five-minute recess before we go in. Into regular session by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Needham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry. Oh, he's got to get hooked up.
It's okay, it's okay.
He's got it written down. Motion to adjourn by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you.